Meeting of the Bedford County Board of Supervisors to order, and welcome everyone here this evening. If you have a cell phone, if you wouldn't mind putting that on silence or vibrate, that would be great. And if you need an agenda, I think there's a few in the back, if you're interested where the sheriff's at. But we'll start the meeting this evening with a moment of silence. Thank you, if you'd stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Mr. Chair, we do need to certify our closed session. So on a motion by Ms. Parker, seconded by Ms. Bensley, the board came out of closed session by a unanimous vote. And whereas the Bedford County Board of Supervisors can be in a closed meeting pursuant to an affirmed recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and where a section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Bedford County Board of Supervisors that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore it be resolved that the Bedford County Board of Supervisors does hereby certify that to the best of each member's knowledge. Only public business matters lawfully exempted from opening meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters are identified in the motion committee in the closed meeting was heard, discussed, or considered by the Bedford County Board of Supervisors. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bensley?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yeah.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
And Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So certified.
I was gonna say, I had tried to line up Reba McIntyre to come sing the National Anthem this evening, but she was unavailable. Next on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Just to note, there were some revised proffers that were sent to us that pertain to public hearing item 8B. And we will also be needing to add this resolution regarding zoning ordinance text amendment, radio broadcasting tower, and winery uses as item 8D.
Eight or nine?
Any other questions about? Sorry?
I think that'd be nine D.
Nine? Nine D. Sorry. Okay. Any other questions about the agenda? Have a motion. Changes, we have a motion for Mr. Scott, is there a second? Second by Ms. Bensley, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, motion passes. That brings us to the citizen comment period time. This time for citizen comments is anything that's not related to a public hearing that's scheduled tonight or in the next 90 days. So I don't have anyone that's signed up, but if there is anyone here that'd like to speak to the board, you would have three minutes on any topic other than the public hearings for this evening. Seeing no one, then we'll close the citizen comment time. That moves us to the consent agenda, Mr. Hiss.
Yeah, we only have one item this evening on the consent agenda, and that's a resolution approving a real estate tax refund for Bedford Residences LLC, which is formerly known as Elks Home, due to an erroneous assessment.
Okay. Any questions with regard to the consent agenda item? If none, I'd entertain a motion.
I move.
Have a motion from Ms. Parker, is there a second? Second from Mr. Scott, this is a roll call, Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bensley?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion passes. That moves us on to the approval of the minutes from January 22 of 2023. Any questions, corrections, or additions to the minutes? All right, would entertain a motion regarding the minutes?
Moved.
Have a motion from Ms. Bensley, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Johnson, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, motion passes. That brings us to our first public hearing. First item is consideration of an ordinance approving the Virginia Institute of Autism's application for tax exempt status on personal property, which is ordinance O-021224-02. Mr. Skelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and this might look familiar. We granted a tax exemption for the Virginia Institute of Autism regarding their real property back in August of last year. They submitted a subsequent application to exempt personal property, which I understand are primarily some vans they use to transport students. Really, nothing has changed with their status, they still provide a benefit to the community that's gonna be offset by the loss in revenue of $613.35 annually.
Any questions for Patrick? We have, this is the first one since I've been on the board that we've had for personal property.
We actually had one a couple of years ago for Crisis Response International. They're the group down at the old Camp JC property, where they had some trailers and other mobile facilities that they came back at a later date and asked for an exemption on that. That's the only other one that I'm aware of, but not a similar situation.
Any discussion or comments from the board?
Can we limit? I mean, what's gonna stop, not this organization to do it, but any organization, just, you know, just to, any cars that there, you know, people own, well, let's put it in their name, they don't have to pay the taxes on it.
Correct, and that would be up to your discretion as to whether to grant or deny those, but certainly upon some information that they aren't really being used for the stated charitable purpose, I think you'd have every right to deny that.
But this one would just be for those two vans.
That's my understanding, correct.
Okay, if there's no other questions, this is a public hearing, so we would open up the citizen comment time now. If anyone wants to speak for or against this proposed ordinance, now would be your time. And I don't see anyone, and I don't have anyone signed up, so I'll close the citizen comment portion. Any other discussion or questions from the board? If there are none, I would look for a motion one way or the other.
I did have one more question, when I was looking through their form that they filled out, it says, one of the questions we routinely ask is about the, I'm looking for the question, about if any of the directors, you know, money that they make, right? Isn't that one of the questions? And then they said that they did have to fill it out, have to disclose that. It's over by here.
I think it's executive compensation.
The number was up. Any director officer, compensation? Anyways, they didn't answer the question.
Right, and I, I said they did it when they, I think, appeared for the public hearing, but off the top of my head, I cannot remember what those amounts are, I'm sorry. I think the more important question is that number four, whether any part of the net earnings goes to any particular individual, and it does not, so.
Looking for a motion one way or the other on this one? Mr. Chair, I move that we would approve ordinance 0021224-02. Okay, have a motion from Mr. Davis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Parker, this is a roll call, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bensley?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion passes. That moves us to our next rezoning application, RZ23-0006, on behalf of Jamie White, to rezone property for a townhouse use. That's ordinance O-021224-03. And Abigail.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, my name is Abigail Currington, I'm with the Division of Planning, and I'll be presenting the rezoning application, RZ23-0006. The applicant is Jamie White, and the property owner is Rules LLC. The subject parcel is RPC number 11800300, which is 5.86 acres and is located at 17605 Forest Road. The parcel is currently zoned as C2 with a corridor overlay, and the proposed zoning is R4 with a corridor overlay. The proposed use is a townhouse use, and it is located in Electus District Number 4. The location map shows the parcel outlined in blue in its relation to other county roads. The parcel is located on Forest Road Route 221. The zoning map shows the parcel's current zoning designation as C2. The immediate surrounding zoning also includes C2 and R1, and across Forest Road you have PID. The future land use map identifies the subject parcel and surrounding properties as mixed use. The aerial photograph from 2022 shows the parcel is currently undeveloped. This is the concept plan submitted by the engineer. If the rezoning gets approved, they will need to submit a major site plan, a preliminary plan, and a major subdivision plat for the establishment of the townhouse use to check compliance with both the zoning ordinance and the subdivision ordinance, as well as requirements for the reviewing agencies per their technical review committee comments. The concept plan shows 54 townhouses, which will be a mixture of two and three bedroom homes with associated parking. The applicant has submitted voluntary proffers with this application. Please note that the words bolded were added, and words with the red dash through them were removed from the proffers after the previous public hearing. They are, one, the property will be developed with a maximum of 54 residential townhouse units. Two, all townhomes will be individual units for sale. And three, the developer will install access onto Brook Park Place. The Planning Commission public hearing was held on January 2, 2024. Five citizens spoke during the public hearing citing concerns about increased traffic on Forest Road, environmental impacts, and general incompatibility with the surrounding areas. The Planning Commission voted six to zero to recommend approval of rezoning application, RZ23-0006, with voluntary proffers. This concludes the staff's presentation, any questions from the planning perspective?
Mr. Chair, I do have one. In our, in the staff report, it was R2, and you're saying R4 tonight, is it R4?
It should be R4.
It was R2 in the packet.
It should be R4.
It says R2 in our packet.
Okay, I'm sorry.
But I was just saying, is it R4?
Yes, it's R4.
That's it, thank you.
Any other questions for Abigail? All right, is there a presentation from the applicant?
Good evening, my name is Jamie White with White Engineering &amp; Design. I'm working with the contract purchaser, who's looking to buy this lot for development. Ms. Currington gave a good presentation for us, kinda went through a lot of the stuff. Some of it may be repeat, but I wanna go through what I have here. We're looking at 5.86 acres, and we're looking to go from C2 to R4. And we're requesting R4 zoning, not for a density requirement. Usually we go R4 for higher densities, maybe apartments or things of that nature. We're not looking for anything at a higher density than 54 units, which we are proffering. And the reason why we're asking for R4 is due to the lot size requirements for townhomes once we go from to R4 as compared to R3, which is, we explored that as well. This piece of property has kind of a unique shape, it's kind of oddly shaped, kinda more narrow. The rear of the property has some challenges, there's some existing streams in the rear, and potentially some wetlands back there, so that's why we're asking for R4, just to get those lot sizes to where they're more compacted as residential townhouse units. So we're proffering to have 54 units, and all these will be units for sale. These are proffered conditions that the developers agreed to. And we do believe that this use does fit with the future land use map. I know it's called for mixed use out here. There is some residential and commercial already out there, and we feel that this is a good opportunity to kinda, kind of a changeover from the commercial against the residential. We will be connecting to the public water in Forest Road, and there's public sewer. There was the existing Forest Main and Forest to tie into when they built the car wash next door to us. Forest Main was run across 221 there, there was a step provided for this lot at that time, and we will be connecting to that for public sewer. And we believe our layout works best with the site conditions that we know are out there. Now, we have not did a field survey to get all the contouring exactly right. We do have to do wetland and stream delineation on the site. DEQ and the Army Corps of Engineers has to certify what the delineation is. So there may be some minor modifications to the layout to accommodate the existing topography or restrictions due to wetlands and streams that are on the site. But what you're seeing here is what our goal is, and it may be tweaked, maybe shifted a little here or there, but what you're seeing is 54 townhouse units, and that's what we're trying to build. Now, we know, and I've been doing this work a long time, Route 221 is a high-traffic area, and we are understanding of that and that concern. However, we have deeded access across the rear of our property through another adjoining parcel to Brook Park Place. This was deeded a long time ago, it was 50 foot wide, and it actually was intended to be a public street potentially accessed that goes through that property. We're not looking to extend a public street there, it's gonna be a private road. It will meet all the fire marshal's requirements for widths and surface covering and things of that nature. But we are proffering that we are going to make that connection to Brook Park Place. Coming out of Brook Park Place, obviously it feeds to the signalized intersection at Enterprise Drive, which that right there will help control traffic and help limit any type of traffic issues there. Now, we do have to get a traffic study done to meet VDOT requirements out there, and as soon as we can, if we can get approval tonight, that'll be our next step, is to start wetland stream delineation and get the traffic study to figure out exactly what improvements are recommended to meet VDOT requirements, whether that's any type of turn lanes, there really isn't much you can do in Enterprise Drive, but what improvements maybe need to Brook Park Place with timing and synchronization, synchronization between the other intersections that are around us as well. So in looking at what our use is and thinking about traffic, we are showing that we're connecting into Route 221. Any connection on the 221 is gonna be a restricted access. So it's gonna be right in only, right out only. So there's no left-hand turn movements coming in, so there won't be anything that's looking to come across and sit inside the median lane to come into this. And any traffic leaving the site will be directed traffic to go to the right. VDOT, obviously, they're very happy with our request to only do a restricted access there, and we believe that this minimizes any potential conflicts out. There's plenty of site distance there, and we're not looking to cross any traffic that's out there. So in looking at traffic, knowing that that is a big issue, so this right now is zoned commercial, and there are a lot of commercial uses that could go on this property. So when we look at the traffic demand that we are generating on a piece of property that is gonna feed into the public roads, what we're asking for is 54 townhouse lots. That's a traffic generation of 314 daily trips total on the site. Looking at peak trips, which is what we kinda designed, turn lanes and entrance design by. Morning traffic, peak times, it's gonna be 24 vehicles. Then in the PM, it would be 28 vehicles. So we're not looking at a great number of traffic, obviously any traffic is impactful depending on where we're at. But I think what we're proposing here and comparing it to what could potentially be on that site in commercial, if it was something sort of like a fast food restaurant, that would generate 1,488 trips per day, potentially. A convenience store could generate up to 2,500 trips per day. If it was like a doughnut or coffee shop, or Starbucks or Dunkin' Donuts, something like that would generate 1,600 trips per day. So obviously, we are well below what could be traffic-wise if it went to something commercial, which is already zoned for. And the benefit that we're also offering is that we are having a secondary access or additional access potentially to Brook Park Place in the rear, which will go and feed traffic to a different direction. So if people are coming from Lynchburg, or Timberlake Road, or things of that nature, they won't even come over onto 221 to feed into traffic, they'll cut through Brook Park Place. I know another condition that we heard with regards to our public planning commission meeting, when you change something that's been wooded, people, you know, really enjoy that wooded area. And we are committed to keeping as many buffer trees as we can along our property line. We wanna keep as much as there possible. The only thing we're looking to do on the, I guess, the north side of that creek is we're gonna have to put in a stormwater detention pond to meet stormwater management requirements. But anything outside, we're not looking to clear to the property line, we're not looking to do any of that. And even in between the creek and our parking lot there, we're gonna keep as many natural tree, as much tree coverage as possible along all those residential properties that are to the north side of us. I'd be happy to take any questions that you have.
Any questions for the applicant? Yes?
This access road you're gonna build, is that gonna be a two-lane road where people coming in and out can pass each other?
Yes. It would be a two-lane road, it'd be a minimum of 24 feet wide. It'd be a minimum of 24 feet wide, so it'd be traffic coming in and out of that road.
You indicated that was a deeded access?
Yes, that is correct.
Not, not just easement?
It is, it was a ingress egress easement that was intentionally designed to be transferred over to a public road. That's what the original intent was. We are not looking to make it a public right-of-way through there. We're gonna maintain it as ingress and egress easement.
Do you have any idea what the demographics of your occupants would be?
That's really hard to say, I really don't know. I mean, these are gonna be units for sale. So, I mean, there's not gonna be any type of restrictions, obviously, on who they'll be sold to. So we, I mean, I just don't have any information on who would be buying.
Do you have a price point?
I would estimate somewhere probably in the mid to upper twos, I would guess. That's kinda typically what we've been seeing in other projects.
Is, I can't find Brandon Court, I'm sorry.
Brook Park.
Brook Park, okay. Does that come out onto Enterprise directly from?
That's right, it comes out right onto Enterprise at the intersection.
Because, I mean, one of the problems that I do see, at least from my point of view, if I'm trying to go anywhere, you know, from, let's say, Timberlake Road over to 221, throughout periods of the day, especially at the peak traffic times, there's, you know, if I wanted to get in the left turn lane and head toward Bedford on 221, that lane is backed up now, it's, it's, there's no longer enough room there. And so you've got a left turn lane, and I realize this is a matter for VDOT, but to me, I don't see how they're gonna deal with this with even more traffic. And I heard you say 324 trips a day?
Three, three, 314 is what the projection is, yes.
Because I thought Todd Daniel one time said that they budget 10 trips per day per unit, but...
That's about, for residential, single-family, it's about 10 trips per day. When you look at townhouse-style developments, that tends to be closer to seven, six or seven.
I got you. But I would be really, really concerned about what's gonna happen at that intersection, because it's, I mean... because it's, I mean, when I'm in a hurry, which is always,
Sure.
I, sometimes if I want to go toward Bedford, I'll have to go straight across into Graves Mill and make a left turn and go through those apartments and go into Clover. I mean, it's really laborious to make that left turn now.
Right, and I understand that, and I travel that way a lot myself, and...
And then to make a right turn on a 221 at the same time, then you've got people who will sit there even though they could turn right on red, and that just drives me berserk.
Right, that's right.
And I could get in the left lane that will turn right, and sometimes I can get lucky there, but...
Sure. The good thing about our development, having that access to Brook Park, is that our traffic will not be generating any additional problems at the intersection for right turns. They would be turned off of there before you get there. And our traffic won't be coming out to make lefts onto 221 either, so it's not going to generate any additional problems. The left-turn lane from 221 going into Brook Park Place is already outlined, it's on the pavement now. I watched that intersection through the peak travel times, in the evening, nobody's in it. And I think that's a little bit of what helps us out, having Brook Park Place being mostly commercial. Our residential traffic is almost a complement to that. So in the mornings, when people are coming into Brook Park Place for commercial uses, our traffic is leaving Brook Park Place going to work, or to school, or whatever. So they're not multiplying against each other, where everybody's coming in and out at the same time. So in the evenings, the left-turn lane turning into Brook Park, nobody's in it, nobody's using it. I think I saw one car use it, and that was really a commercial vehicle that was running late that day coming in. So I think what is out there on the pavement now, as far as turn lanes, especially left-turn lanes into development, is more than adequate. And then our traffic will not be providing, coming down Enterprise, any additional traffic problems at the intersection.
Any other questions?
The company that you have, or the plan that you have the easement on, I just looked it up, it says VIP LLC. What business is that?
When the way the property...
Your business?
It used to be, I think, in Avery, I guess, used to have classes there at one time. I don't know, I think it's just a business. I actually looked at office space there at one time years ago, but that's a business use property.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing, so I've got a couple folks that have signed up to speak, so I'll open up the citizen comment period now. Just as a reminder, you do have three minutes to speak for or against the project. There's a clock on the wall that will help keep time for you. First up is Rob Eagle. If I said that right?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and fellow Board of Supervisors. My name is Rob Eagle, and I do own the property at 316 Brook Park Place. My property is going to be directly affected by this project. It's mainly the parking area for my, for my business. There is a deeded access, but I don't know if, there's no pictures here. I guess this one diagram you could see shows how much it will be cutting into my parking lot and how much space it will be taking away from access for my tenants to be getting in and out of the property. My tenant there is Impact Living Services, and they have a counseling program to social services kids. And it's a 10,000-square-foot building. I don't, I didn't prepare how many office spaces are in there, but they counsel quite a few kids in the social service program. Those kids are in that parking lot quite a bit, and so my biggest concern is a barrier, or how will those kids be protected? Because as of right now, my parking lot is paved from the edge all the way almost over to my building, and kids are zipping in and out of there all the time. So that's my biggest concern. I tried diligently, I believe, and Abigail Currington knows that I've chatted with her and emailed her and tried to get the phone number for the developer to have a conversation about this exact problem, what's going to happen to the, to the kids and protecting them with this access. I believe the engineer is correct, that most of the incoming traffic will be coming down Brook Park Place. If you're coming from Forest, you will turn right into the property that they're trying to rezone. All other directions, if you come from the Food Lion, if you come down Enterprise Drive, all incoming traffic from those directions will be coming through my parking lot. So I will be definitely heavily affected by this. I was not contacted by the engineer or the developer, I don't know if that's, if they're supposed to. I would have loved to have had a conversation before this, just to try to come up with some solutions. And I'm open to coming up to, you know, solutions later, if we can figure that out. I'm not aware that a traffic study has been performed, maybe it has, I wasn't shown that. Again, my biggest concern is with 314 trips a day, the incoming traffic is mostly coming through my parking lot, and I would say a lot of traffic will go out on 221, but a fair amount will still come out my parking lot as well. I suspect that if the zoning changes there, then that, that deeded access potentially could change, it could be voided due to the change of the use, I'm not sure. But I would like to explore that and find out if that messes up the deeded access. I guess my time is up, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up, I have Greg Lester.
I'm Greg Lester, I'm an adjacent property owner at 111. And I don't want a bunch of condos or townhouses behind my place any more than anybody else in this room would like to have that. I bought this property back in the 90s. What appealed to me was the neighborhood setting, but also the privacy in the backyard. So, you know, what this is going to do is basically the woods that we have behind us, it's going to put like a motel behind my house, is basically what it's going to be. So it's going to ruin it for me, it's, my property value is going to be decreased. When I moved to this property, it was commercial, and this was never a thought. So I guess I took, I did take that for granted. Also, the traffic, my dad is in the summit right now. When you take a left off of 221 to get on Enterprise Drive, in order to be able to take a left to go down this road where, in order to get into this proposed neighborhood, you have to wait until you get to that turn. You can't just, there is no lane to get over there, you have to get to that point. There's a bottleneck, I was there at 5:15 today. There's a bottleneck right now to be able to get to the turn-in lane to take a left, which hardly anybody uses right now, I agree. But, and that traffic was backed up all the way to 221. So it's enough traffic out there, it's too saturated, I don't think it's a good idea, it's dangerous. I see people taking a left into Aldi. I see people taking a left into the old Walgreens, which is now Dollar General. So people speed all the time, people break the law. Just because you have a right in and a right out doesn't mean it's always going to happen that way. So I'm not happy about this. Also, what's to keep people from buying up these townhouses and renting them to people? What's to keep people from having four, or six, or eight occupants of a single one? Parties, weekends, everything else. I just think the traffic is going to be more than we realize, and it's already too many cars on 221 as it is. It's very, reminds me a lot of the old Billy Craft intersection that they're trying to figure out right now. So I'm not too happy about all this being behind my place, I've been there for almost 30 years. That's very much all I have to say.
I'm sorry, I'm looking for your house on GIS.
111, Graves Drive.
Rachel, you found it, 111.
Okay. Thank you.
I think my entire backyard is going to, you know, pretty much... And the trees that are there, you know, they're mature trees, so they don't have a lot of low foliage, they have a lot of high foliage. A lot of poplars back there, some oaks, but most of the foliage is up high, so I just see, there's a lot of issues, a lot of red flags for me, so...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
All right, those were the only two I had signed up. Is there anyone else that wanted to speak for or against this, this evening? If not, I'll close the citizen comment time, and we will move to discussion here at the board.
Mr. Chair, I don't know if the applicant had any rebuttal.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, applicant, anything else you want to add rebuttal-wise?
Thank you. I just want to reiterate again, I mean, I know that traffic is a problem. I think with our proffered conditions of having access to Brook Park and the number of traffic trips that we're generating with 54 townhouse units, it's a definite improvement than what could be built on the site as a commercial use. It could, and then a commercial use that would go there by right obviously wouldn't have to connect to Brook Park Place, and all that traffic would be dumped on to 221. So I think having that access proffered to Brook Park, and I think looking at the number of units that we're going to be having with the traffic generation, I just really think that that is the, a better impact to an already, you know, undesirable condition that's in 221. And obviously, we're going to work with VDOT through the traffic study for their recommendation and what they require on the roadway.
I have a question. A question, I don't know if you can answer this, Mr. White. With regard to the gentleman's comment about, I mean, we clearly have issues in our own county where folks are buying these short-term rentals, or even perhaps long-term rentals. And in a case like this, I think there's been a legitimate concern expressed here by the man tonight, and you didn't address that.
Well, obviously, we are providing units for sale, these deeded properties are individual units for sale. Obviously, anybody, I guess, could rent out a house or a townhouse that's an individual units for sale. I don't think there's any restriction that can be applied to that. And once these properties are sold to individual owners, as long as they're doing what the, you know, county requires, there's nothing really we can do to kind of change that. So it's, we're selling them for individual units for sale, and that's our intent, is to have residents go there, live there as owners, so...
I'm, just to conclude, I mean, I think you've made a great presentation, and I think you guys have got a nice drawing there. But I do believe we need to respect the rights of folks that live in that community. And I just can't support this, knowing that the potential exists for folks to abuse their ownership rights by renting these places out to, you know, a group of folks who would be wreaking havoc, making a lot of noise, weekends or other times. And that really, really troubles me.
I understand, I mean, I think you've got to realize, I've done a multitude of townhouse developments in the general area. When you're looking at units with a price point close to $300,000, I haven't seen that in some of the things that we've done recently, once we get to price points at that level. So, I mean, there's nothing, when we offer them for units for sale, then it's the owner's decision and what they do with them. I mean, obviously, we have no control at that point.
The road that you're planning, are you going to pay for that road?
Yes, that's going to be on the developer's cost.
And how are you going to get around his parking lot?
So, once we get a survey done on the property and see what part of his parking area is impacted. I didn't bring a copy of the deed, I've got it on my phone here, but it grants access across the property at a 50-foot width. And there was conditions to make sure that certain buildings were so far off of that right-of-way when they were built, so there's enough room to get improvements in for the roadway to be built. We'll work with the adjoining property owner that we're coming through, try to, if we need to reshape parking on his property. I mean, obviously, we're going to be looking at bringing in curb and gutter, and we'll define entrance locations to where it will come in and feed into his property and try to get him back all the parking that he had. Now, if there is a thing to where there's potential for parking to be lost, their deeded agreement shows that this was supposed to be access that was shared between three parcels that are along there. At any point in time, once this private road is built, any of those could petition for that to become a public right-of-way if they wanted to. So we're going to build something that would be up to a public level. Asphalt, curb and gutter, things of that nature. We're going to maintain it, it's going to be ours to maintain. And then we'll work with the adjoining property owner to make sure that, you know, we're shaped into... We're not going to create an unsafe condition for people ingress and egressing out of his property either. So we'll make sure that we, if we need to reshape, do curb deflections to make sure traffic feeds into his parking lot, we'll make sure that we do that.
Thank you. All right, I'll open it up now for further discussion, questions, and possible action.
It's another one where it was sold last year, $500,000 a piece. And now they come and ask us to rezone it. I wish developers would come and put an offer on a house contingent on it being rezoned, and then come with that.
Mr. Chair, I just, I don't know the answer to this question, but these deeded accesses and all, are they really designed for a roadway for 54 townhome units to be? I mean, that sounds like a road, that's not exactly just an access to get to the, kind of like the back of the property. It's the way this looks here, the property doesn't even touch, you have to go across. I mean, that would be my first concern, is was that the intent to access this large parcel, come across a parcel to get to it when you don't even touch the cul-de-sac? I'm just, I'm just a little concerned about that.
I do have the plat pulled up, if you wanted to see it.
Yeah.
That helps. I need to zoom in a bit.
Can you put it on that screen right there?
Put it up on that screen, Patrick.
It's the note that says 10 foot right-of-way from Pride Road.
So it's not, now we've really been a lot of that, 1.13, is that second, is that a part of that payment?
It's like a stubber.
So it was designed for that purpose?
Yeah, so that doesn't prevent you from maybe putting pavements, parking lot there, but that doesn't necessarily mean you get to keep the, if the access that... Mr. Chair, I've, I'm quite familiar with this property. I remember it back in 93 when the DeRay show came through there. It used to be a nursery on that property, and a tree came down across 221. I got stuck and had to turn back around, because it came down right in front of my car. And there was literally a river running across the road that wasn't there a second before. It was the strangest thing, but that was back when they were widening 221. And I know there's been a number of different businesses there, they haven't been, they haven't been there for a super-long time because it sits so low that it's sort of hard to see the commercial business there. You know, in that respect, the topography is such that the townhouses wouldn't even, you know, you might see the rooftops, but you're not, they're not really going to be sticking way up in the air because they're already like a story below grade. But, you know, I look at it, it's not our determination to determine legal issues, whether, whether if the zoning changes and the, if the deeded access no longer exists, then with this proffer, then, you know, this applicant would probably have to come back to us. If, but that's, that's a legal issue, that's not a decision for this board to make. We don't make legal decisions, we make zoning decisions. And I haven't seen anything that gives me great pause. I actually like the ownership model much more so than a rental model. I feel like when it's... a rental model. I feel like when it's, when it's an ownership model, the, you know, the people who buy it, they have some ownership in the community. They have, they're paying the tax rate directly rather than indirectly through rents. So they actually care what the tax rate is because they have to pay it. You know, I like people to have the buy-in into the community in that respect. So I like the ownership model. I like the fact that this property, which already has water and sewer, would, would be able to be brought to its highest and best use. And it's going to produce less traffic than what would otherwise commercial property be. In addition, isn't R4 sort of a transition zone between residential and the commercial? So that, that's somewhat to be expected. So I, I'm fine with it. It's in my district. So unless there's further discussion, I'd like to make a motion to approve this resolution.
We have a motion on the floor for Mr. Sharp to approve the ordinance. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Scott. This will be a roll call vote. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bansley?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion passes. That moves this on to, let's see, we have, the rezoning application has, is off the table, correct? So we will just be hearing consideration of a resolution approving special use permit SU23-0009 on behalf of WSLK Radio for broadcasting tower use. Resolution R.021224-05. Mr. Mitchell?
Yes, sir. As you mentioned, this is special use permit application SU23-0009. The owner of the property that is subject of this request is Frank and Gisela Hernandez. The applicant, WSLK Radio, care of Timothy Hernandez. Subject properties, parcel number 22203500, 22203600, 90511738, and 90511739. The property is located at 1386 Lynch Road, Route 837 and adjacent properties. Size of that property is 4.776 acres. Existing zoning of that property is R1, low-density residential district, and they're proposing to establish a broadcasting tower radio use in the election district number two. Location map showing the property's location on Lynch Road, very close to East Lake Community Church, if you're familiar where that is. Here's a zoning map showing the property is zoned R1, all four properties that were mentioned as the subject of this request. Future land use map showing the property is in agricultural natural resource stewardship for the future land use. Here's an aerial photograph of the site taken in 2022. Here's the concept plan from the applicant. As mentioned in your application or your report, the applicant intends to do some part and parcelling to create a parcel for the radio broadcasting tower to go on out of the four parcels. That is shown here on this. There is a radius there as well for the fall zone area shown on this concept plan. Tower elevation drawings. So this tower will be 197 feet in height, AGL above ground level. I want to point out that this, unlike a lot of your wireless communication facilities, this tower actually will have a seven-foot spire on top of the tower, and it will require registration with the FAA. Project impacts due to the height, the proposed tower will be visible from adjoining properties and those traveling along nearby roadways. No obvious historic or environmental impacts. And as part of the special use application, the applicant is requesting away from the landscaper requirements. Planning Commission public hearing was held on December 5, 2023, and we did have several citizens speak at that hearing citing concerns with aesthetics and the loss of property value related to the proposed use. Planning Commission recommended approval of the special use permit application by a vote of six to zero with staff conditions. And they also added an additional condition requiring landscaping on the compound area, thus rejecting the applicant's request for the landscaping to be waived. So here are the seven recommended conditions. Number one, general conformance of the concept plan and conformance of all ordinance standards is required for site plan approval. Any changes to the layout of the site that will result in increased impacts to adjoining properties and uses shall require approval of an amended particular use permit, process outlined in section 30-90 of the ordinance. Number two, the broadcasting tower area shall not exceed 197 feet in height. The broadcasting radio tower shall be maintained with a non-reflective galvanized finish. Four, all general safety recommendations from the Atlanta Technology Consultants report shall be followed. Five, lighting if used shall be the minimum required for safety and security and shall be directed downward and away from adjacent properties and roadways. Six, prior to the granting site plan and construction approval, the properties must be in compliance with the provisions of zoning ordinance and county code requirements for inoperable vehicles and unlawful solid waste accumulation. Just, just kind of go back to the pictures here for this particular property, there are some inoperable vehicles on the parcel to the lower right. So that is what that is speaking to. So they'll have to get that cleaned up in order to be able to get a site plan approval from us. Number seven, this is the condition the Planning Commission recommended adding, and as the application is required to landscape the 20-foot by 20-foot compound area with small evergreen trees that are compliant with the planning requirements from section 30-92-4C3 of the zoning ordinance. I know this is probably the first time you've had a broadcasting tower radio use before you, but they're very, they have to meet all the same requirements that your wireless communication facility would. So, as mentioned, our Atlanta Technology Consultants did review this tower and deemed that they were meeting all the requirements of the ordinance, as well as all the general safety and recommendations from federal agencies. Do you have any questions I can ask from a planning perspective?
Any questions?
Does this tower go have any kind of fencing around the bottom to keep kids from climbing the road?
Yes, yes, required to. Yes, sir.
All right.
What's the property zoned?
R1, residential one. Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I do have Mr. Frank Hernandez here with me if he'd like to say a few words.
Okay.
You might want to remind this one that you get three minutes.
Okay. I'm not Frank. Frank is my dad.
I'm sorry.
He's the owner of the property, and I'm his son, which works out well since he's my dad. We're just trying to get back up to full strength so that we can hopefully resume a profitable business, which right now is losing money, and also be able to continue to serve the community as we have been. We've been a very important component of supporting charities and public events and that sort of thing, which we do at no charge. And this is necessary for us in order to have sufficient coverage around the lake. We were forced to take our tower down because it was on rented land and the landlord didn't want it there anymore. So that's where we are with this. We're just trying to get back up and running. Any questions?
Questions for the applicant? I think we're good.
Thank you.
Look forward to having you back up and running.
I'm sorry?
I look forward to having you back up and running.
Well, I look forward to it too, and you ought to come and see us again.
All right, this is a public hearing as well. So I don't have anyone signed up to speak for or against it, but if you desire to speak, now would be your time. Yes, so when you get up, well, that's fine. Just give us your name and your address, and you'll have three minutes.
I live at the property that we're talking about. And most of what you see in those pictures have been cleaned up already. But the, what was mentioned about being able to see it from the other roadways, it's going to be very little of it going to be able to be seen from outside of Lynch Road itself. If you actually know the layout of the land, you're not going to really be able to see it from anything but on, when you get down that way. I mean, you might be able to see the very tip of it, but you'd have to be looking for it to be able to do that. I just wanted to point that out, and we really need this radio station back up and running. I advertise on it, that's why.
For the record, please tell me what your name and address is.
Lawrence Baker and 1386 Lynch Road, Manita, Virginia.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Anyone else like to speak for again? If not, we'll close the citizen comment time and open it up for any discussion and questions from the board.
We have a radio tower. It's selling. So we have the tower somewhere.
Mr. Chairman, I just, I'd like to say that just the two or three years that he's been down, he's been missed. It's been something, he's been a huge, huge part of the community over there, everything from a chamber of commerce to the church events to socials. Community looks forward to having him back on the air at full strength.
So it's in my district, but I'm going to ask that we table it for this meeting because we are not doing a rezoning, but we're going to talk about on the next item, a zoning text amendment, which will allow the tower, but it needs to go through planning so that we don't have to go through.
It goes through the process.
So I am making the motion that we table this, and that's seconded by Mr. Johnson. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that item is tabled. That brings us to the added item, which is the resolution zoning ordinance text amendment regarding radio broadcasting towers and wanner uses.
You made that an ID, didn't you?
Oh, we did? Is there anything after this?
There's a 9A.
There's a 9AB.
Well, it's coming up. Hang tight. Let me turn the page. I'd written it on the other one. All right, that brings us to consideration of a resolution authorizing the reallocation of funds for the Motorola P1 project change order, which is resolution R.021224-07. Our new director, Ms. Giglio.
Hi, I just want to introduce myself. I'm Christine Giglio. I remember with Parker from when I was in IT back in the day, not anymore. So I'm going to explain briefly this. During our Motorola P1 system project implementation, it became evident that the property and evidence data from both Bedford County Sheriff's Office, I thought the sheriff was going to be behind me, and the town of Bedford needed to be converted in order to be put into the Motorola P1 system. So the total sum of this change order, that it was obviously not into the original project, into the original contract, so the total sum is $142,854. The town of Bedford is contributing their 12.5%, which is $17,856.75. So we're responsible left for $124,997.25. So what I'm suggesting is that we take, we have for this fiscal year operating budget, $225,000 for the Motorola maintenance. Our system has yet to go live, so invoicing for this maintenance is deferred until fiscal year 24, 24, 2025. So I would like to reallocate $124,997.25 from the general operating budget that I have now to the Motorola P1 CIP project to pay for this. It needs to get done because Sheriff's Office and the town of Bedford are both responsible for thousands of pieces of evidence and property that has been in there for over decades. So they can either hand-type it or get this data conversion, and they'll be able to input it easily.
Any questions for Christine?
I would just like to nominate Christine for employee of the month because she came not only with a need, but how she was wants us to fill it with the money to do it. So kudos. The first time you came before the board, and you not only gave us a problem, you gave us an answer.
I appreciate that, but I had good people helping me.
You set the bar pretty high.
Yeah, you did.
Thank you.
Any other questions for her? All right, thanks, Christine. We'll open this up for discussion. Questions or possible action?
Mr. Chair, if there's no discussion, I would like to move that we approve resolution
All right, we have a motion for Ms. Bansley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Parker. This is a roll call. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bansley?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion passes. That moves this down to consideration of a resolution authorizing the execution of contract amendments with Zytel and Shentel for a rescope of the 2022 VADI broadband projects, resolution R.021224-06. And who is presenting?
I'm going to pinch-hit tonight.
Okay.
Mr. Smedley wasn't able to make it this evening. This, this agenda item is a follow-up from an October 20 work session, October 2023, where you heard from a variety of internet service providers, one of those being Shentel. During that presentation, you learned that Shentel is going to have extreme challenges about completing its VADI project within the specified timeline, you know, mostly because of, since they were going aerial with their deployment and working with utility companies and the timeliness or lack of timeliness of pole attachment agreements and permitting was impacting negatively, impacting their ability to deliver the project in a timely manner. So after that work session, there were some discussions with potentially re-scoping a portion of their project and dividing out some of their passings to another internet service provider. So we negotiate a contract scope adjustment, and that rescope will address 1,530 passings or addresses in exchange for a 12-month extension to complete the remaining balance of the project for Shentel. In that opportunity, in that rescope, the 1,530 addresses are being then determined to, Zytel could perform the delivery of those addresses in a, in a more effective and expeditious manner, so we could get broadband delivered to the citizens in those areas. So we need to have a contract amendment with Zytel in order to add those 1,530 addresses. So as a result of that, you know, Zytel will now complete its complete project with this broadband VADI grant by March of 2025. Then Shentel will complete its project, VADI projects, by September 2025. Zytel, March 2025, Shentel, September 2025. So if these contract amendments were approved, then the county will still need to execute agreements with the Department of Housing, Community Development, because we also have contracts with them, with that agency for the grant money. So what's being asked in the, in the resolution is to authorize a county administrator to execute the contract amendments between the county and Zytel and Shentel respectively regarding the transfer of the 1,530 addresses, and then also reappropriation of a county, county and VADI grant funds from the Shentel VADI project to the Zytel VADI project. And that is illustrated in a table in the resolution and in the agenda item. So there's, that's all I have, unless there's any other questions.
Any questions for Robert? All right, any discussion from the board on this one?
I think we've met and talked about it a whole lot.
Is there a motion out there, one way or the other?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution R.021224-06.
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Parker, seconded by Mr. Scott. This is a roll call. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bansley?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion passes. That moves this to consideration of a resolution authorizing submittal acceptance and appropriation of a RACE planning grant to study the Route 122 corridor, resolution R.021224-08. Mr. Davis?
This, you may, may recall that a RACE grant for this same exact project was submitted last year, and by the, by the Planning District Commission on behalf of Bedford County and Franklin County, the grant was not awarded, but staff from The grant was not awarded, but staff from the from the plan, West Piedmont Plan District Commission and Central Virginia PDC and Franklin County and Bedford County met with USDOT representatives and learned about, you know, what would make a more successful grant application. So from that meeting and lessons learned, we've been, staff has been retooling the grant application in hopes of making it more successful. So this is essentially a resolution authorizing the submission of this grant again to see if it gets funded. Just a little bit of background. There hasn't been a study of this route since two thousand and three, so, you know, it's over a little bit over twenty years. A lot of things have changed on one twenty-two on Franklin County and Bedford County side of that of the lake, and we anticipate changes to continue. So thought process is that while we can, if awarded with a grant, it would be a great study opportunity to incorporate, you know, current and future growth patterns and plans as to how to prepare for that, for the growth in that area. There's no there's no monetary match required for this grant, and there's no obligation necessary to implement any of the recommendations. I know sometimes with federal grants, there can be some concerns about strings attached, but there's no obligation to implement the recommendations from a study because this would be a route study. There's no obligation to follow up with a federal construction grant because that's important because we're much more familiar, much more competitive with our Virginia grants, like with Smart Scale or other type of transportation projects. So if we have this, if this grant is is approved and the study is conducted, then we'll have a fresh set of data in order to present to various state department, state highway department funding programs in order to get some things done in the near future. And that's really, I guess, about it. This if, again, final thing I'll say is that if we're not, if this isn't awarded, this will be managed by the West, this grant would be managed by the West Piedmont Plan District Commission. So it's not a burdensome grant on county staff.
Any questions for Robert? All right, any discussion regarding this resolution?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Make a motion with approved Resolution R oh, two, one, two, two, four dash zero, eight.
Here we have a motion by Mr. Scott. Is there a second? Second from Ms. Bansley. This is a roll call. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bansley? Mr. Sharp? Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion passes. Now we go to the resolution regarding the zoning ordinance text amendment changes for radio broadcasting towers and winery use.
Mr. Chairman, this is a fairly simple for you to process tonight and to initiate. It's just simply adding the broadcasting tower radio use as a special use permit with general use standards in the R one zoning district as well as winery being added as a as a by right use with with general standards as well in the C two general commercial district. So I think that was the recent issues, I think, with some other applicants we've had recently. So this will certainly address those issues.
Okay, any questions for Jordan on this?
Jordan, I just have one question. When is initiated tonight and goes back to Planning Commission? Could they have discussion of possibly buy special use permit in some of these other districts to kind of like your cell towers?
My suggestion would be if you want to add them in the R two, I don't think there's a point in having them in R three and R four just because they're so so rare in the county. Those are only rezoned districts, so the chance of you being able to put one of those properties is next to nothing. I would certainly just recommend, you know, maybe moving forward tonight with your initiation being to allow them in R two as well, and they can take it off the table or make a decision at that point.
I just thought they they could discuss it because just so we don't find ourselves back here trying to initiate it again.
Totally understand.
Just so they can talk about it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, any other discussion? Is there a motion out there?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion. I don't have a resolution number, but to initiate the zoning ordinance text amendment for the radio broadcasting tower and winery uses, making note that that would be as a by right use in the C two.
A second.
Okay, we got a motion from Ms. Parker, seconded by Mr. Johnson. Is it okay for a voice vote? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. All right. That's good news for you guys. We appreciate it. All right, board committee reports. Is there, are there any committees that need to report?
I'll just say that the Finance Committee met last week and covered a number of things. Number one, the Finance Committee met and discussed the length of service program that we have for our rescue squad and volunteer rescue squad kind of a little bit of a sort of like functions of the pension program to a certain degree for the amount of years that they serve as a volunteer rescue squad. So we looked at a different way to help fund the that that plan to make sure we're meeting our obligations and we're not shorting ourselves down the road. And there was some good discussion, but we need to continue to reexamine what we reviewed, and we'll continue to work on that. At the next board meeting, though, you will have three different financial policies that the Finance Committee also reviewed with finance staff. You'll have an updated procurement policy. You'll also have a purchase card policy and a what we in-house call a budget policy, which is really documents kind of our budget process and how budget amendments and contingency uses are are organized. So those policies will show up at your next board meeting for your review.
Okay. Any other committee reports? Board comment time. Anybody have comments they want to share this evening? Actually, I'm going to just give a shout out to the Manita Volunteer Fire Department for organizing. They fire a training exercise on Saturday. We had eighty-four firemen there. It was a controlled burn at Mariners Landing. They worked hard all day. I got trapped down there for five hours because I couldn't get out. But let's see, it was Manita, Huddleston, Saunders Fire Department. Forrest had some members there. Montvale had members. Bedford had members there. Chamlesburg and Buckhannon. So it was a ton of people. It was a good day. It rained on us most of the afternoon, but high quality there. Anybody else?
Motion would adjourn.
Administrator report?
I do have one thing that I wanted, one introduction to make. I don't think you need any introduction to this board, but to the listening public, our new Assistant County Administrator, D.W. Lawhorn.
Yeah, D.W.
Started February first. He is definitely hitting the ground running and is doing great work already and look forward to working with him on the variety of tasks and items that he's supervising and working on. So he's he'll be a welcome addition to our group and look forward to a lot of the great things that he'll bring to the board for consideration and the work that he'll do with staff and the respective departments that he's looking at. So he's.
Glad to have you.
Very glad.
All right, that brings us down to an appointment that we need for an unexpired term on the Library Board of Trustees. We had multiple applicants. Anyone want to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would like to move, and I'm hoping I'm saying her name right. I mean, I would like to move that we appoint Shereen Dunkum to the Bedford Public Library Board.
We have a motion for Ms. Bansley to appoint Shereen Dunkum, seconded by Mr. Johnson. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. County attorney?
No report at this time, Mr. Chair.
I guess is it too late to make a comment? I just like to thank you all for for doing a good job while I was out for a couple of meetings. I was glad to come home to Bedford County and see that I'm still here.
We didn't do anything.
That's what's great about it.
We have board information.
Board calendar reminders, board information. What do you want to share, Mr.?
Yes. Um, this our next board meeting is February twenty-sixth. I know one item on the work session will be our first pass at the capital improvement program for FY twenty-five. So we will be officially starting the budget process.
Mr. Chairman, I just ask that we keep John Putney and his family in our thoughts and prayers with the loss of his mother recently. She's a fine, fine, fine lady.
All right, Mr. Scott.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Either one of them. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Let the record state Tommy seconded.